County Commission Meeting, not the Board of Education. Okay, I'm sorry. This meeting is now called to order. And for our prayer, I'm asking Commissioner Brown and the Pledge of Allegiance is Commissioner Pete Meyer.
Stand for prayer. I have only followed. We thank you for another beautiful day that you've given us. We ask for your guidance today with this board and the decisions and hope for respectful environment. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we be seated? Now we're moving to the item number four, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion for the adoption of the agenda with one change, to remove item twenty-two point two. Is that the only change, Madam Clerk?
Okay. All right. So twenty-two, or twenty-two point one, isn't it?
Oh, I've got twenty-two point two.
Twenty-two point two.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. All right.
Hold on one second. I think the manager has it.
I just want to verify. I thought we were... Is, Justin, are we talking about the zoning map for Rocky Point Township is continued, or?
No, sir. It'll be the one for the board and county.
Okay. All right. My mistake. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. So the motion stands with the exception of item twenty-two point two.
You can make a motion. You have a second.
I'll second.
All right. And who in favor? Unanimous?
About...
Mr. Tate, would you excuse him?
I would for the moment, probably. And I'll make that motion if you want to excuse Mr. Tate. He's on his way. I'm sure he'll be here, but we're gonna have to excuse him for the moment, I guess.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
All right. Who in favor? All right. Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. We go to the old business, item number five. The Board of County Commissioners' meeting on November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Has everybody had a chance to look at that? Having problems with it? All right. And five point two, item five point two, public service recognition of outgoing Commissioner...
We need to approve the minutes, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay. We need to approve that? All right. All right.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
All right. You have a second?
Second.
Who in favor? All right.
I apologize. I'd like to pull item nine point one of the consent agenda. Is this an item maybe George, you and Commissioner Pete Meyer would know? Didn't we hear from Wes Stewart on this issue at our last meeting?
Yes, I spoke with him, and I can explain that when we come to that item.
Well, it's under a consent agenda, and I'd like to pull it out from under a consent agenda so we could have comment on it. Okay. If that would be acceptable.
Well, you're not to the point of approving the consent agenda yet. When you get to that point, I would suggest you just pull that item, then have discussion on it. You can always bring it back for the vote.
Sounds good.
Okay. Move on. Okay. Item five point two, public service, public service recognition of outgoing Commissioner David Peatmire. So... I'd just like to say, this is unique, since I've been on county commissioners. We've never had two at one time being replaced, and so this is a unique opportunity. People really need to realize what people put on the line when you run for office and spend a lot of time away from your families. And it seems like sometimes I want the full-time job, especially around the time of the budget time, spring of the year. But I really appreciate Commissioner Peatmire. We work together a lot and could always agree on everything, but nobody's ever going to agree on everything. So we appreciate your service and to the county. And you have anything to say?
I do, but I'm gonna reserve my, my comments for when I get back to my chair. But thank you very much for this. I appreciate this. I want to recognize several of my family members that are here. My Aunt Margaret from Penderly. Stand up, Aunt Margaret, please. She was here when I was actually sworn in. My mother had passed away. Both my mother and father had passed away. And my Aunt Margaret is, has been a support for all my life. She's been like my second mother, so. Also, I have my two in-laws, Louise and Larry Salz. Please stand up. They're my wife's parents. Unfortunately, my wife is out of town on business. She's in Atlanta this week for GE. And so I'm very happy to have her parents here. They've been a support throughout my tenure as a county commissioner. They've campaigned for me, which was a big, big help, and I really appreciate all their advice. As I negotiated and moved through several difficult items, I would always go to them for advice and counsel. And so I appreciate them being here. Our oldest daughter, Lauren, and her husband Dan, they have just recently moved back from Denver, Colorado, and are living in Penderly also. So I'm very happy to have them back.
Are these the people you talk about incessantly?
Yes, yes, yes. And then my brother John and his wife Leslie, who live in Wilmington. My brother John grew up in Penderly, and Leslie grew up in Burgal here. She's formerly Leslie Derner, and they've always been a support mechanism also. So I couldn't have been as successful as, as I think I would have been through this tenure as a commissioner without this support mechanism. I want to say that it's a big, big strain on your family unit. They have to sacrifice a lot of time, a lot of the candidate and the commissioner's time is pulled away from them. So they have to sacrifice, and they have to, they have to move on without you in many, many cases. And so I appreciate these people being here. And Andy, if you're gonna take a picture, I'm gonna want them to come up also. And then I have some additional words that I'm gonna say, but Fred, let's, me and you get a picture, and then I'd like to do a picture with my family, too. All right, so I have, I have a few more words I don't want to say, but you might want to sit down for a minute. So this shouldn't take very long. I just have a few comments that I'm gonna make. That's not funny. So, wow, well... We are here at my last meeting as a commissioner, and it sure has gone by fast. And as I said, I have just a few words that I would like to say in my farewell exit speech. This is actually a budget book from two thousand twenty-one. See how thick that is? This is the end result of the budgetary process, which is certainly the most important responsibility commissioners face each year. Yes, the proper allocation of your tax dollars consumes lots of time and resources, as it should, enforces department heads, the county manager, the finance director, and ultimately the county commissioners to make some very tough decisions based on previously established county priorities and sometimes unfunded edicts that are forced on us from state laws. Many of you may be saying to yourself, why is he talking about budgets and the spending of money in his farewell exit speech? Well, this is one of the main reasons I ran in two thousand fourteen for this commissioner seat. And I am very proud of the enhancements we have made to the process and the fact that we have been able to balance the budget, minimize the use of the fund balance, and actually grow our savings account balance to the proper level to allow emergency allocations after Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane Florence, all while not raising taxes except for in two thousand sixteen, when we incorporated the recuperation of the voter-approved two thousand fourteen school bond investment. And let me say, that was, that was a well, that was a good investment. So by the way, I am very proud that we have consistently prioritized education at the top of our list as we have increased budgetary funding year over year while continuing to seek out and purchase new properties for future new school sites as well as purposely improving the communication and relationship with the Board of Education. Before I move on from education, let me say that making the tough decision to build a new school in Penderly with increased student capacity versus remodeling an eighty-year-old, over-capacity, and operationally expensive school has proven to be a prudent and financially sound decision. This new school is not only architecturally beautiful, but also allows for easy expansion in the future as the community continues to grow. Speaking of growth, I would like to commend the Wilmington Business Development Group and my past and current fellow commissioners for continuing their efforts to entice and land several large corporate entities which have chosen to purchase sites and build their businesses in the Pender Commerce Park. This investment has resulted in significant increase in employment in Pender County by the opening and filling of hundreds of good-paying jobs. Likewise, this investment provides the positive justification to expand the Internet, water, and other infrastructure services to the central and western parts of Pender County. Getting back to my original point and rationale for running eight years ago, I was led, I was, I was to lead the effort to fund, complete the design, obtain the environmental permits, purchase the land, and actually construct the thirteen-mile road now, now known as the Hampstead Bypass. Having moved my young family from Burgal to Hampstead way back in two thousand four, it quickly became obvious that Highway seventeen was overcrowded, congested, as well as very unsafe, given the increased number and frequency of auto accidents on this road. Once elected and appointed to the Wilmington Metropolitan Planning Organization, I became aware of how transportation projects were identified and scored so they could be prioritized and funded. Obviously, there were more projects than there were funding. So I spent the next several years touting the benefits of the Hampstead Bypass to anyone who would listen. I traveled to Raleigh on several occasions to meet with state decision and policymakers and also spent, also went to Washington, DC to try to get federal representative, representative support. As we learned what the scoring formula inputs were and which ones we could tweak, we broke the projects into two separate projects so that each project would score better. Eventually, we obtained regional support when the WMPO awarded all their points to these two projects. This action immediately resulted in the attainment of funding for both projects. Since then, permits have been issued, the design has been completed, and almost all the land needed to, needed for this project has been acquired. While the Hampstead Bypass will not be fully completely constructed until two thousand twenty-seven, the first five miles is well on its way and should be opened in two thousand twenty-five. This is by far mine and all of our biggest accomplishment while I was in office and will not only help the citizens of Hampstead and Topsail Island, but also bring much-needed congestion relief to the region of southeastern North Carolina. Lastly, I want to urge my successor, Wendy, the other new commissioners, Jerry and Mr. Tate, as well as the old guard of Jackie and Fred, to take advantage of the opportunity to increase the quantity and quality of hospital, healthcare services, and surgical services offered in central and western Pender County. Pender County has the chance to fill a void in a true healthcare desert by requiring that future hospitals be teaching hospitals for both doctors and nurses. This will hopefully result in many of these young doctors and nurses falling in love with Pender County and deciding to stay, set up residency, and become a part of this growing community after they have graduated and are registered and licensed. Again, this is a monumental decision with significant implications long into our future. Please hire a third-party consulting group to guide y'all through this complex process so that the best healthcare system applicant is hired. So in closing, many people have asked me why I chose not to file for reelection this cycle. My answer is pretty simple. I believe in term limits, and thus it is time for someone new to serve. Thank you all for electing me to serve for two terms. I truly feel that I have left Pender County better off now than when I found it. Best wishes to my successor and to the future of Pender County. Thank you.
We've worked a long time together, I think sixteen years.
Yep, been here sixteen years.
Appreciate everything you did for the county, both of you. Y'all work together, and it's a change. Say something?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Come on, sit down, Fred. I'm not gonna hold you too long. I just got a couple of things I want to say. It's, I gotta share a few things with you because after sixteen years, you know, if I didn't have a little something to say, you'd wonder what we had done up here that whole time. But we accomplished a lot of things. Mr. Peatmire covered a lot of things. He covered the financial aspects of it. I really wasn't gonna get too much in the weeds of those things. I would just say that we are leaving, he and I are leaving the board, and we can honestly say that Pender County is financially strong, and, and we're proud of that. Now, it takes three votes to make anything happen, and this board has pretty much gotten along and agreed on a lot of things and has positioned Pender County very well. And thankfully, we have a healthy fund balance. We're prepared for anything that might come our way, we hope, and that's very important, especially when you live in an area like we live in. We have a very strong credit rating because of that in the decisions that this board has made, and, and we can be proud of those decisions, too, because this has placed us in a very good position to borrow money. We got a school bond coming up. We know we're gonna have to borrow some money for that and, and other projects that we may have to float along for. So these, this financial environment we're in here is very important for the future and for these new board members as well as the existing board members. He mentioned WBD. I just wanted to mention a couple of... WBD has been a very important component to industry in our county, and we hope that the new board will see that also and continue that relationship. I think that's very important. We're sitting up here, I guess it looks like, sounds like we may be bragging on some things. This, it's not so much bragging for me as it is, we're making accomplishments. And folks, we had a lot of challenges during that time, so these new members coming on, the reason I'm saying all this is you're gonna have challenges. Don't let it get you down. I mean, this is, you, you're gonna have hard decisions to make. But we had those challenges, and we were successful. And I want to mention some of those challenges. Flooding events like Matthew and Florence cost us a lot of money for debris removal, restorations for our courthouse and other county buildings, as well as the damage to the schools that cost us millions and millions that had to come out of fund balance and other sources. Thankfully, we were prepared for that. We had a terrible recession, not just Pender County, but our state, our, our nation went through for several years. So we had that challenging us the entire time. We had a COVID pandemic. None of us had experienced a pandemic, so this was new to all of us. So we, we had a lot of issues to stumble through while we made our decisions and tried to keep the county afloat. We built new schools from the last bond. We've got a new Topsail High School that's really is just about out, is just about overpopulated now already. We've got Surf City Middle, Surf City Elementary. We're on new schools in Penderly. You mentioned Penderly, and I'm glad you did. What a beautiful school. These are projects that we can be proud of. So this new board thinks, I mean, the voters made that decision for you not too long ago. You're gonna have to spend some money for the schools, and so that's gonna be a challenge in itself. You're gonna have successes. You're gonna have challenges. You're, you're, you can handle it, and I have faith in you. I think that it's gonna happen. Some things, and I'm almost finished here, but some things that were concerning to me, kind of what I would call protections. I know during the campaign and, and other times where I would hear things about transparency, whether people want to believe it or not, we're probably one of the most transparent boards in the state of North Carolina. This is something, I know Mr. Tate was on the board when this happened years ago. We made some changes with our board. We advertise our agendas right there in Mr. Pettigrew's newspaper, and I think that's important. I hope that we continue doing that because the public gets to see what we're going to vote on before the meeting takes place. If they want to be here, they can be here. They can read about it in the newspaper, say that's important to me. I want to be there to have my voice heard. Not many state, not many counties in the state do that, and I understand it's not necessary, but I think it, for the time when I came on the board, I think it was very helpful to the citizens to know there was that transparency there. You have to have a unanimous vote to add an item to the agenda that did not get advertised. That's very important, folks, in my opinion. It, it assures that no one's gonna try to pull the wool over anyone's eyes or try to slide anything on the agenda for political... or try to slide anything on the agenda for political purposes. The board has to agree 100%. Every member has to agree to add that item. And we're, and I'm proud of that decision. And Mr. Tate was on the board when all that took place. Another little simple thing that no one really thinks about, public comment. You remember was at the bottom of the agenda when, when I first came in as a commissioner. We were scratching our head trying to figure out, people got angry. They couldn't talk about an item that we were gonna have on the agenda because it had already been voted on by the time they got the public comment and could speak to it. And for me, that was huge. That was, that was something that needed to happen. We now have public comment before we vote on anything. And so, folks, these things are important. It's transparency. And I think it's important not just to the citizens of this county, but to this board. I have faith in this board. I've learned a lot in sixteen years. I think this is a role that you just continue learning. You just continue all the time. You go to Raleigh, it gets overwhelming sometimes, but he, I know you mentioned going to Raleigh. That's a totally different world and, uh, you have, but, uh, you have all these boards that you have to be on, and it does take time from your family and from the things that are important to you. But it doesn't mean that what you're doing is less important. It's just you have to supplement and divide your time a little differently and be a little smarter with it. I have, like I said, I've been here sixteen years on this board. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve you all as a commissioner. I thank you for that opportunity. And I'm getting ready to step down, and I wish Mr. Groves all the luck in the world. And, uh, I hope you, uh, if you ever have any questions about anything, feel free to give me a call. But, um, I hope that all of you will, um, be successful. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much. I think I'm gonna miss both of you guys. I've worked with you a long time. I've been on the board now ten years and so... But to move on, we're gonna, um, future of Pender County, we gotta work for the county and do what's best for the county after I make a certain. There's a lot of things on the back burner we got coming up, and we gotta work together at the board, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say thank you to you all for making this job a little easier. And, um, I have faith you all are gonna be successful and, um, it's, it's, it's been a ride. As Mr. Williams would say, it's been a ride.
I, I have a comment. Mr. Brown, I, when I first came on the board, you were chair and were chair for five years. And I appreciated your calm steadiness and your, um, willingness to, to, to explain and, and your fairness in making sure that everyone had knowledge of things that were coming up and, and the history behind them. And I, I certainly appreciate that from you. And, and you're, you set a fine example for, for leadership and fairness. And, uh, I, I wish you all the best in your retirement and your lovely wife. And y'all go have some fun with those grandchildren. And Mr. Pete Meyer, before I even took the board, you were on the phone with me hour after hour explaining things and how things are funded and budgeted. And I've learned a lot from you, and I really have appreciated you bringing to the table a business acuity that, that no one else on the board had to the extent that you had, um, from your experiences in big business and international business and project management, more importantly. And, and I, I, I certainly appreciate, um, your service, both of you and, and all that you've taught me, and I, I, I hope to make you proud.
Certainly will. Certainly welcome. And, uh, thank you very much for everything you, you guys have done for being patient and understanding and trying to find out the bases and the history. That's very, very important, that, um, all the factors are considered before a decision is made so that we can make the best decision that is possible. So, um, I appreciate those comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add some comments to that. Mr. Pete Meyer, certainly I haven't served with you as long as I have with Mr. Brown, but I certainly acknowledge your dedication and your tenacity to take on issues that have not always been challenged before, such as when we look at the whole gambling situation and so forth. And many of those situations that you brought to our attention and the need for us to continue to be advocates and look for ways that we can save dollars for our taxpayers while we build our county. So thank you for teaching me that as well. Mr. Brown, I can't say enough words. I came on this board. I was a young 26-year-old, and I thought the textbook it taught me as a history teacher how, about politics. But I learned that in my first three months, it did not teach me about politics, okay? It taught me that, um, it might have taught me some theories, and it might have taught me some political dynamics, but it didn't teach me about what do you do when people who are your best friend are there with you tomorrow 'cause you voted on an issue, and those same folks in a couple of weeks are happy with you again when you vote on that issue. But yet, um, when that happens alternatively, how do you move on? And I think one of the things, George, I really enjoyed with you on this board, you and David both, is that when I came on, we may not always agree, and often, often we didn't always agree. But one thing we agreed that we were not gonna allow our decision up here to impact our personal opinions of each other. And rather how we left tough conversations many nights, one or two o'clock in the morning. You were the referee between me and David sometime. He'll laugh and say that. He'll tell you that. He would ta, you would say, or his wife would say, "It's been two days now. You and Jimmy haven't talked. You need to come on back on rather." So I appreciate that, how you are, he would always say that after a meeting, "I'm not gonna take my sandbox and go home, but I'm gonna come back and work." Mr. Brown, you taught me that, even this afternoon in our department conversation, you taught me how to stand in the midst of opposition. You taught me how to stay focused on the mission of our county. And I thank you so very much for all you and your whole family have embraced me through some very challenging times. You all have been there. Thank you. For not only being a great commissioner, but a great friend.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next time, I'm gonna move on to reorganization, and we'll turn the capital over to our county attorney. Chairman, we'll run the, uh, reorganization. My yearly moment of power, um, this is a, a little more than, than, than it is, uh, most years. The first item under this will be, uh, the oath of, oath of office for newly-elected Pender County Board of Commissioners, member Jerry Groves. And he will be sworn in by Representative and former Sheriff Carson Smith. I have whatever you prefer. Anybody else, I'd say go to the microphone, but.
I'm asking my daughter to come and hold my mom's Bible.
Place your left hand with the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Jerry Jerry Groves.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
As a member of the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
Jerry Jerry Groves.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will well and truly execute the duties.
I will well and truly execute the duties.
Well and truly execute the duties.
Well and truly execute the duties.
Of the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
Of the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skills and abilities.
Oh, here we go.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skills and abilities.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Commissioner.
The next item on the agenda is the oath of office for newly-elected Pender County Commissioner Jimmy T. Tate. I believe, uh, our honorable clerk is gonna handle swearing in.
I state your name.
I, Jimmy Tate.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
As a member of the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Jimmy Tate.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of Pender County Board of Commissioners.
The duties of Pender County Board of Commissioners.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
The next item on the agenda, oath of office for newly-elected Pender County Board of Commissioner, member Wendy Fletcher Hardy. I believe Judge Ray is going to administer the oath.
I state your name.
I, Wendy Fletcher Hardy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
As a member of the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Wendy Fletcher Hardy.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of Pender County Board.
The duties of Pender County Board.
Of county commissioners.
Of county commissioners.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skills and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, I did wanna say something really quickly about Wendy and what inspiration she was as a teenager. Because of God and Jesus Christ, it's, uh, her working through a campaign while she was also getting better medically with cancer and put God first always, and as our sheriff said today, God first, family, and then Pender County. But how fortunate you are, the call she considers in her campaign. We are very fortunate to have her.
The final item, uh, for my brief moment of power will be to open the floor for nomination for the Chair of the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Presada, why are you doing that? I wanna make, I know I'm currently serving as Vice Chair, but I want to relinquish those duties to someone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. Uh, at this point, uh, the floor is open for nominations for the Office of Chair of the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
I make a motion that we elect Jackie Newton for Chairman.
I second.
Uh, any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask all those in favor of, uh, Commissioner Newton to be Chair, to signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations, Madam Chair. Uh, now, I still get to one last part, which is the Vice Chair of the Pender County Board of Commissioners. I would open the floor for.
Make a motion that we elect Ms. Fletcher as Vice Chair.
Second.
If you know other nominations, I would ask all in favor of the election of Ms. Fletcher as Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations.
I, I want to thank my fellow board members for the honor that's been bestowed. And I just have a few comments. We are a board of five members. While it takes a majority to make any decision, we are all and everyone equally important and each and every one equally and important in our input. Each and every one of us will work diligently behind the scenes because what we do here in these meetings is simply the tip of the iceberg in what goes into being a county commissioner. Now, I tried to warn all these new members what they were getting themselves into. I'm very proud of our new members. I'm very proud of the varied talents and experiences they bring to bear because they have been elected to serve based upon their individual qualifications. If we wanted everybody to agree and everybody to see things the same way, there wouldn't be any need to have a five-member board. We could just elect a king or a queen. But that's not the way we do business. So as Chairman, I vow and commit to my board, to our citizens, and to the public at large and the people we serve that this board will be respectful. It will be handled respectfully with the priority being given to what is in the best interest for the people of Pender County, the citizens that we serve. And I make that commitment as Chair, and I'm pretty sure I speak for my fellow board members, that that is our commitment to y'all, our citizens. So thank you.
Comment, uh, I just wanna say we've all gotta work.
Comment. I just want to say we've all got to work together for the county, and we're all here for to serve the county. And so, congratulations to the Madam Chairman, and so, I'm here to work with all of us.
I also congratulate our new board officers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, getting down to business. Do you, do our new members have anything that you wish to say?
I do.
Jimmy?
I want to thank God for being here. If it weren't for God, I wouldn't be here. I made a statement to God and said a prayer to God, and I said, "God, if you want me here, you'll put me here." So God put me here. I want to thank the citizens of Pender County. Twelve hundred and four of them put me here. I won by twelve hundred and four votes. So, thank you for those twelve hundred and four, and the rest. Thank you for my family. I have three family members here left. I would like for all three of them to stand at this time. Three sisters. And let me say, without these three, I couldn't have made it. They went through the hell I went through during my campaign. The tears that I cried, they cried. And it wasn't easy. I was confronted with eight-foot signs in front of the early election polls, "Do not vote for Jerry Grubbs." I won't get into the details, but that's what I put up with the whole time. But God saw fit to put me here. Thank God. I want to thank my advisory board. I have several of those here. My advisory board are people that are going to keep me in touch with what's going on in their community, and I am a commissioner for the people. That's just the way it is. I wanted to thank Mr. Brown before he left, but he's already exited. I want to thank Mr. George Brown for his service. I've known George for a long time, and he is my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, so, back to the business at hand. The Chair recognizes our most dignified and gracious ex-county commissioner, ex-state representative, and all-around great sounding board, Carolyn Justice. Please come up and speak to us.
I enjoyed the part of the program where you gave the former commissioners an opportunity to speak. After you've served as long as they have, we all know it's nice to have an opportunity to say, "We thought we did some pretty good things," and they did. But as we move forward with the new board, as a former commissioner myself, ten long years and some really tough times, but like you, I always had Trey Thurmond sitting there saying, "Don't do that. That'd be stupid, Carolyn." And...
I have my head, so that didn't happen.
Which made a difference. I just want to say this to you. If we really are going to say, and I'm speaking to each of you now, that we owe God the glory for what happened here, then we must remember the verse in the Lord's Prayer, "Forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us." And let's put this election behind us firmly, never to be discussed again. Just moving forward in one body. I congratulate your new county manager. We haven't met yet, but if you've been a county manager before, you know what you're in for. But I have faith in you, and I think the voters of Pender County have faith in you, and I'm always here if you need me. Congratulations to each of you.
And we're so grateful for you. Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Attorney, I wasn't privy to the creation of this particular agenda, but there's an item of public information. Do we have any public information to discuss?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Manager, do we have? And we have no sign-ups for public comment either, Madam Chair.
That takes care of seven and eight. All right. At this time, the consent agenda. Do we have any objections or any items that need to be pulled on the consent agenda?
Miss Chairman, I ask that nine point one be pulled for later day.
Do we have second? Do you want to have it pulled and held over, or do you want to have conversation? Do you want to have it pulled from the consent agenda and hear a presentation?
I was under the impression it was going to be in closed session.
I think this one is, it's basically, I'm just looking at, maybe an on-call position. I think it's about $10,000. We hadn't intended for it to be closed session, but would you like for Mr. Stewart to speak to that?
Well, in light of the request, it might be more feasible, and that's why I had requested that it be pulled from the consent agenda so that the new commissioners could be privy to the reasoning and rationale for this item. So, anybody second? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's organized?
Motion for approval.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? All in favor of approving, okay, all right. All right, so, the consent agenda carries. Item 10, approvals and resolution. Mr. Andrews, you have item 10.1.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the item you have before you is a resolution that would appoint Gilbert Combs and James Gant as approved map review officers for the town of Bergall. And this is a requirement that comes under the Pender County ordinance, is Madam Chair.
So, do I have a motion?
Motion for approval, the important one.
Or do we have any questions or comments with regards to this item?
Okay.
First, Adam.
Okay.
Any questions of our manager on this issue? Now, motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 10.2, Ms. Blue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Meg Blue, Pender County Finance Director. For those of you who are new or may not have met me yet, I have before you an item that was, this is a parcel that was approved for surplus several meetings ago. These are the results of the auction. The recommendation is to accept the bid from the highest bidder, Lynda Walker, for English Town Road, 2907 English Town Road in Willard. It is higher than tax value. It's higher than the present tax value, but the present tax value of the land, of the present tax value. And then the building is of negligible value at this point.
What was the winning bid and what is the tax value?
Sixty-seven thousand, and the tax value was fifty-three, four twenty-one.
That makes me feel good.
He would.
It's a much better offer than the tax value.
Now, that, for clarification, that is an online bidding. Is that correct?
Correct. It's on govdeals, where we auction all of our real estate and personal property once it's approved for disposal in a public way.
Right, right. So, any conversation, any questions, comments?
Motion for approval.
I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Blue. All right. Item 10.3, Mr. Adams. A subject near and dear to my heart.
I thought you might like this one. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Good afternoon. My name's Daniel Adams, and I'm the interim planning director for permitting inspections. What you have before you this afternoon is staff's recommendation to award a contract and purchase order to Zulu Marine Services in the amount of $279,201.78 to complete a project under the Streamflow Rehabilitation Assistance Program, or STRAP as it's known. This is a grant-funded project that's funded through a state allocation. The county applied for grant funding through this program that is operated under the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, and we were awarded $357,888. We put this project out to bid on October 25th and received five proposals. Staff did a, put together a selection committee and reviewed those proposals, and staff's recommendation is to award a contract to Zulu Marine Services.
Have we used Zulu for any of our snag and drag work before?
We have not, but their references were for folks in the area. New Hanover County, Brunswick County, and Ori County, South Carolina were their references.
Commissioner Grubbs, do you have a question? Do you have a question? I saw you did that.
No, I don't.
Okay. So, is there a particular area that we're focusing on with this portion of the contract?
Yes, ma'am. Not a particular area in particular, per se. The three sites are Harrison Creek, upstream of the bridge at 210, near the Cross Creek or Avondale communities, Bulltail Branch, which is in northwestern Pender, and then Big Branch, which is in, say, southwestern Pender, near the county apartments, all four twenty-one. So, those are the three areas.
The apartments that the county no longer owns.
Right, yes, ma'am. Semantics at this point, I suppose.
That's right, that's right. So, this is a grant program that we have to incur the expense, and then we will be reimbursed for this expense. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. It's reimbursement-based.
Okay. So, do I have any comments?
Have you finished Shelter Creek? Has that been finished? I see still some debris over there.
Yes, sir. The portion of funding that we had to clean the stretch of Shelter Creek, that work has been completed. It was not for the entirety of Shelter Creek. That is a priority site, and we're pursuing additional funding to finish that stretch.
So, you want to go back and have a quick check of everything, make sure everything's been completed completely?
Yes, sir. We have a member on staff who focuses on drainage projects, and he does inspections of these sites and make sure the work that was done is maintained, you know, to the best of the ability. Generally, after a big storm, of course, we'll have trees down, limbs, things like that.
Which is a program really is needed in Pender County, clearing these rivers and streams and creeks, and so, it's a really worthwhile project.
Just one point, this grant program that the state has put together had $38 million in funding allocation across the state. There were over $200 million in requests. Just for some perspective for the board on across the state, you know, this is a really important program, and a lot of local governments like this type of work.
That's a very good allocation for Pender County, one of a hundred, and we got $38,000 out of two.
Right.
That is nice. Yes. So, Daniel, if you would, please, for the new members of our board, will you please give them your title and your area of expertise and duties?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Well, currently, I'm the interim planning director over permitting and inspections. Part of that interim status, my title was hazard mitigation coordinator. And really, the crux of my job is to focus on resilience in Pender County. So, obviously, as I'm sure y'all are well aware, we have suffered through two pretty significant flood events in the past six years, in Hurricanes Matthew and Hurricanes Florence. We've leveraged a lot of grant money to improve our resilience, and so, we're continuing to work on those efforts. And our goal is to, you know, improve resilience for people, property, and infrastructure to lessen the impact of future flood events.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. Any more comments, questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With the money that's saved based off of what they bid, how is that other money allocated, because this was a grant?
Yes, ma'am. Great question. So, we have, we had requested a little bit of additional money to focus on our Beaver Management Program. So, we had earmarked about $20,000 to go towards our Beaver Management Program. That could include removing dams as well as funding some equipment. The additional funding could potentially go towards another site, or it could go to extensions on these sites.
Right. Because the way I have it calculated, we should have saved about $78,000.
Exactly. Yes, ma'am. And so, any extension or any, you know, new site would come back before the board.
Anyone else? Any more comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second. Commissioner Fletcher, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Bradley, item 10.5, resolution approving interlocutory, interlocal agreement with New Hanover County related to the Scottsville Medical Center. Bottom line it for us, like you did for me earlier.
Oh, good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman and members of the board. Yeah, tonight, we're here to briefly discuss the Scottsville Medical Center, which is a site that is currently under review. So, what essentially I'm asking the board today is to approve an interlocal agreement with New Hanover County to essentially designate that New Hanover County will perform the necessary zoning review, building review, and building inspections for the Scottsville Medical Center, which is on a parcel that is right on the county line. The southern portion of the parcel is in the New Hanover County jurisdiction and has the bulk of the facility, with the portion of the project in Pender County having a small sliver of the parking lot as well as some driveway accesses. So, essentially, this agreement would allow the process to be simplified in terms of zoning review, and would allow New Hanover County to essentially lead the project in reviewing and administer the Pender County ordinance on our behalf in that situation. In terms of a benefit for New Hanover County, it does simplify the review process for the applicant, and they would be able to collect all permitting and inspection fees related to that project.
So, for clarification purposes, although it's, the Novant facility is called Scottsville, named after Scottsville, which is in Pender County, a sliver of a parking lot is in Pender County, and the remainder of the project is in New Hanover County?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay.
But ultimately, in my professional opinion, I think regardless if it was on our side or the New Hanover County side, it's going to benefit everyone within that area, Scottsville, Hampstead, as well as New Hanover County.
But the point is that New Hanover County will be the one to issue all the permits and incur the taxes from these facilities in New Hanover County.
I can't speak to the tax revenue, but I think...
But you can speak to the permitting.
To the permitting, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And there are some out parcels associated with this project on the Pender County side. The property zone GB, if there were any uses that would require a special use permit, it would have to come to the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
Despite this interlocal agreement?
That's supported in this agreement. Any sort of special board approval, they would have to get it from Pender County. But like a by right use, if they wanted to do an additional out parcel development of a smaller medical practice or dentist's office, something of that nature, then they would be able to do that by right, and they would be able to facilitate that review for the property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Any questions?
Yes, I have one. Who would be the one to ask about the tax revenue, and would that person be here tonight?
I'll be happy to jump in on that, Mr. Commissioner. We would still maintain the tax revenue, because the property is in Pender County. It doesn't change that. And we have done this, and there's a residential development that is majority in New Hanover County. You just had a few lots in Pender, and we agreed that, and then they agreed when we were doing The Whale, which was a very large online retailer. I can't remember where the NDA, that's what speaks to it.
In our industrial park.
Yes, in our industrial park. They did the same for us. We were going to handle all the permits, and it makes it easier for development if they only have to go to one source to get their permits. But it does not change the tax value, back to your original question, sir.
Good question. Any more questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. All right, I, I, it's been brought to my attention that I overlooked item ten point four, which is, I see some folks in the auditorium who are here specifically for that. Said Bergoff fireworks display. Mr. Batson.
Good afternoon, Chairman, or Chairwoman and Commissioners. Before you, as a resolution, um, after the Ocracoke mishap in two thousand nine, legislation was passed in two thousand ten requiring county commissioners to approve all firework and power techniques shows. And the Fire Marshal's Office, my name's Tommy, I'm the emergency manager. And, um, the Fire Marshal's Office has received a request from the town of Bergoff to perform a fireworks show around eight PM on New Year's Eve to enhance their New Year's Eve party and just asking for a motion and a second for that to be approved. And the county Fire Marshal's Office, as well as the town Fire Marshal, will be on site for that entire event.
And you've reviewed the plans?
We have met with, staff has met with the company, the town of Bergoff staff, and they've done some test shots to make sure everything's adequate and all the paperwork is in line for this show to be done on New Year's Eve.
And do you support it?
I support it.
All right.
So it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be the Bergoff Middle School, is it gonna fire from there? Where's it gonna fire the fireworks?
The town's gonna have their big festival in the Courthouse Square there where they do Blueberry Drop and you'll be able to see them. And the shooting, well, that should be secured off at Bergoff Middle School.
I gotta leave somewhere with Bergoff Middle School.
The middle school will be the shoot site, but you will see them downtown. And they said the night of the test fires, everything went good and everybody in the town was happy. So, look forward and we can all be home by midnight. It's an eight PM show.
Wonderful. All right. Any more comments, questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Thank y'all.
All in favor? Mr. McCoy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. It's unanimous. We're looking forward to the fireworks show.
And the Blueberry Drop.
And the Blueberry Drop. All right. Getting back to our agenda, um, item ten point six. Mr. Van, consideration of a contract to replace a cooling tower and public restroom HVAC unit at the Pender County Courthouse.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. As part of a courthouse grant from the state, Pender County solicited bids, uh, for the HVAC cooling tower and the HVAC unit for the public restrooms. We only received one bid on the first bid date of November twenty-second and therefore had to re-advertise the take bids again. We accepted those bids today, December fifth. I put a copy of those at your desk. Hopefully, you have seen those. As far as the bid summary, I'm not asking for an appropriate appropriation of additional funds as this will be applied to the appropriate and approved funding sources we already have in place. I respectfully ask the board's consideration to accept the lowest responsible bidder of Newcom and Company out of Wilmington in the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand and fifteen dollars.
So, let me ask you this question. With regards to the public restroom HVAC unit, are those restrooms available to the public? Are, are they the ones that open to the outside?
They do. Yes, ma'am, you're exactly right.
Okay.
The ones on the north end of the building, the Wilmington Street side.
All right, very good. Um, and that is a budgeted item?
Yes, ma'am.
For this budgeted purpose?
Yes, exactly.
So, any questions, comments?
I do have a question. Um, now, the public does not have access to those bathrooms during the day. Those doors are locked.
The ones on the north end, meaning the Wilmington Street side, they do have access. That's the public set of bathrooms.
I worked in the courthouse two, two weeks, a couple of months ago, and those doors stay locked. I just want to see if I'm missing something.
Yes, sir. I think you may be confusing that with the staff restrooms, which are just before you get to the public restrooms, which are in the foyer where the glass doors are at. So there's actually a staff restroom on each side, as well as the public restrooms beyond that. Those, the staff restrooms do stay locked, which are individual bathrooms, meaning individual male and female, and then the public restrooms are larger.
I think it's a security issue, isn't it? A security issue concerned about this bathroom, too. You can't just let anybody go, I know these on the outside, but, um, there was a lot of security.
Well, but, but again, the public restrooms are not locked during the day. No, sir, not at all.
Could I ask Major Collier to come up and address this, please?
Certainly, Major Collier. Not to put you on the spot.
Nah.
It, it, the, those restrooms that you're talking about are open to the public during the day when the courthouse is open for business. But those, those restrooms are behind closed doors, which is an emergency exit. So people coming from the outside cannot go through the glass doors to go directly into it. They would have to go around through security to get into it. That's when the courthouse is open.
Oh, I see.
I just want to clarify that because it's not open, those bathrooms are not open to the public during the day unless they come in and go through security.
Mr. Commissioner, I apologize. I thought you meant open to the public as far as when they're in the building.
I think they should be, but-
And I apologize. I thought you meant once the customers are in the building, that's when they do have access to-
I have one other question. The, um, the bid that you received, that money-
Thank you.
Is a grant. Thank you, Major Collier. That is grant money.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Motion carries. Moving on to item ten point seven, process for selection of consultant to assist with health care provider negotiations. Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Pender County issued a request for statements of qualifications related to professional consulting services to assist with the evaluation of its options regarding health care providers and negotiations of any legal agreements. Four responses were received by the closing date of November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and I will say that for the record, we had a lot of interest. I thought we might get more than four, but I think four is, is quite, uh, is, is great. The purpose of this agenda item is for the board to determine a structure for the evaluation of the four responses. And you have three options that are there for you. There, there may be others, but basically, a, a staff committee making a recommendation to the board. The Board of Commissioners evaluating the proposals, and probably would want to do that in closed session. And option C would be a combination of the two. And I will state this, uh, once you've made that decision, we will start moving forward quickly. Because this is a, the, I think the deadline right now is July the twenty, or sixteenth or seventeenth of twenty-twenty-three.
If, if I could take an opportunity to, a privilege to explain what we did when we were evaluating Juniper. And what we are doing now is, the RFQ was to, um, retain the services of an outside consultant to help lead Pender County through a, uh, assessment of our medical care needs so that we can, um, go forward appropriately. Um, at, when we were reviewing Juniper, we had a, uh, two commissioners and staff. I believe our, uh, Ms. Moser, our health care director, uh, was a part of it. Trey was involved. Uh, our county manager was involved. In light of the fact that we have now four, um, uh, entities that have responded to our request for quotes to provide this kind of assistance, do you, Mr. Manager, have a recommendation for us as to how you would recommend that we proceed at this time?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I would like to have some, uh, uh, two commissioners and then the same Trey, myself, Carolyn. I think a combination of the two, and I would also recommend evaluating all four proposals. I had the, uh, opportunity to just kind of flip through those and they all look very strong and, and it's very competitive.
Um, understanding that any more than two commissioners would be a public meeting, which would require prior notice. I, I've given this a lot of thought and if we have staff consistently asking the same questions and of each of the four providers, then in closed session, they can apprise all commissioners at the same time rather than having two commissioners intimately involved in the process, which may or may not be fair to the other commissioners who will only have a very short period of time to evaluate. Does that make sense? I, 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 I think that if I had a vote, which I don't unless it's a tie vote, if I had a vote or a motion to make, I, I would, I would think that we have qualified staff that would be able to consistently evaluate these four entities and provide the full board with, with our options and, and make recommendations as to the best way to go.
You're talking about option C? Option C?
Uh, option C would be-
Is that what you're calling it?
Well, option one was staff evaluate. Option two was the Board of Commissioners to be involved in the evaluation or the Board of Commissioners evaluate. Or C would be a hybrid. So what I'm proposing is option one, that the staff evaluate and make a recommendation-
To the board.
To the board in total, so that we will all be on the same, uh, playing field when we go to evaluate these four entities. But, but, you know, it's any conversation-
We gotta make sure we tell them not to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. No way.
And that, and that, that was, that was a misunderstanding in that, uh, and, and I apologize for that confusion. That was for, that, that was the price tag from start to negotiations to market to the end product. We are doing a needs assessment for the medical needs, uh, of our citizens.
And, and Madam Chair, if I may, the, for the new board members, the lease term with previously New Hanover, now Novant expires in July. And there is an agreement they entered into when they purchased New Hanover that they would continue services through October. I, I've had a respectful disagreement with their attorney about what that means, but we, it's a bit of a time crunch. And I know this is a big decision to put on you here on this, but we are facing, uh, to get that done is, a, a, as you can understand, trying to figure out who's going to manage the hospital conceivably starting in July, we, we gotta go.
It, it, it's a lot. And, and, you know, to, to reassure you, we've had conversations with other entities that have expressed interest. But we, on behalf of our citizens, need to understand intimately exactly what it is that we need so that we can go forward. And because of the time constraint with the lease ending, um, that would be my suggestion that it may be quicker, uh, and more fluid for the staff to make the initial recommendation and meet with all of us at one time and, and shorten the time.
Not go long enough.
So, but, but that's just my comment.
Madam Chairman, um, that sounds good. What staff are you speaking of?
Well, that would be at the manager's discretion, but I'm, I'm thinking, uh, as we did in the past, it would be our county attorney, our county manager, our, uh, health director, and whomever else he chooses to sit in on that evaluation process.
We may, we may- Recommendation to you for final approval. Staff would not make the, the, the selection.
I understand. I feel like we need to nail staff down more.
I think we can do that once we determine that that's what we want to do. Yeah. And then we can, if you have some concern.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Option one, A.
All right. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous and passes, and thank you so much, uh, Mr. Andrews and the sooner the better on that. So, uh, item eleven. Mr. Manager, do you have any items for discussion with the board?
I, I do not, Mr. Senator. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Van?
I do not, thank you.
Mr. County Attorney?
Madam Chair, pardon me. A couple of items, several items, sorry, for closed session. Item three, attorney-client, including discussion of Coastal Pine Solar versus Pender County, twenty-two CBS, uh, one zero two nine. Uh, item four, economic development, and item five, possible acquisition of real property. That's all I have. It's for closed session.
Can you give that to us one more time?
Uh, yes. Uh, item three, attorney-client, including discussion of Coastal Pine Solar, file number twenty-two CBS, one zero two nine. Uh, item four, economic development, and item five, acquisi, possible acquisition of real property.
Those three, four, and five?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney Attorney.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Anything else?
Not for me.
All right. Commissioner Green?
I have no comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner McCoy?
I went to, uh, this weekend to the, um, Christmas on the Square. A lot of people there, a lot of vendors, and it was a really good event, Courthouse Square. So, a lot of people turned out and, uh, it was a really good event. I think it's the biggest event they've had so far this year. More vendors, more people, the same. You see a lot of people. We always get to see a lot of people. They don't come out and talk to us. So it was really nice to be out here. That's all I got.
Do we need to go into, uh, uh, Commissioner, I've gotten ahead of myself because we, uh, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Okay. So, um, do we have anything, uh, that we need to address with Maple Hill Water and Sewer? Mr. Keel, how about Rocky Point Water and Sewer? Scotts Hill Water and Sewer? Morris Hill Water and Sewer? Forest Creek? None of it. All right. So we'll move on down to item eighteen, Pender County Board of Health. Any items? Can you give us a brief update as to any COVID or flu situations that may be going around now that the holidays are here for us? Hate to put you on the spot, but always interested to hear that.
Well, once again, just a reminder that COVID is out there. We still are seeing the trippledemic is what they call it with COVID, flu, and RSV. I think that for the most part, RSV in the county has dropped. COVID, I expect, um, we did see a, uh, just a bit of an increase for those tests that we receive that are positive. But that wouldn't have been any different than any other county across the state probably because of Thanksgiving. I do expect that then with Christmas and with New Year's, probably the second week of January, we're probably looking at, uh, another round of COVID, flu, uh, increase. But flu, uh, type A is out there and, uh, vaccines are available at the health department.
Do you have COVID boosters available?
Absolutely, and for all ages. And we still have, uh, quite a few free COVID test kits for anybody that wants to come either by the health department or to the annex and pick those up.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. Appreciate it. All right. Um, do we have anything for social services? Thank you, Mr. Stewart. So, we're going into closed session. Do we have a motion, uh, Ms. Bysshe? You make a motion and we are going into closed, closed session for items. You make a motion, and we are going into closed, closed session for items.
Three, four, five.
Including the reference case site.
Okay. Item, item three, attorney-client privilege, uh, Coast Pine.
Solar.
Solar, twenty-two CBS, one oh two nine. Uh, item four, economic development, and five, uh, acquisition of real property.
Yes, ma'am.
How about our MOU trade, just to make sure?
Pardon?
The MOU for the SRO, is that included?
Uh, yes, that would be.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Do I have a second for the motion for closed session? All in favor? All right, we are now in closed session. Thank you, everyone.
Our seven o'clock public hearing will begin with item twenty-two point one, rezoning. Uh, Mr. Brantley, will you be presenting or who's presenting on this one?
Uh, no ma'am, uh, Mr. Chris Hatcher will be presenting tonight for this item.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight I'll be presenting rezoning case two zero two two dash three eight. It is a zoning map amendment application. Ryan Crawl, applicant on behalf of Rocky Point Interchange LLC owner, is requesting the approval of a zoning map amendment to rezone one tract of land, approximately seventy acres, from the RA Rural Agricultural and GI General Industrial Zoning Districts to the GI General Industrial and GB General Business Zoning District. The current property has a dual, has two zoning districts on it. It is the RA Rural Agricultural and the DI General Industrial. The applicant would like to rezone thirteen acres from the RA Rural Agricultural District to the GB General Business District, and the remaining acreage would be zoned, rezoned to the GI General Industrial and also remain General Industrial.
Is it currently General Industrial?
It, a portion of the property is General Industrial, so what they would like to do is to take the frontage of the property which is on rural agricultural-
The road frontage?
Yes ma'am, the road frontage to, rezone it from rural agricultural to general business. Approximately about eleven acres would be with it there. As we can see here in the slide, the road frontage of one seventeen is zoned rural agricultural while the rear portion of the property is on GI General Industrial. Also, as we can see that the surrounding zoning districts of the property are general business to the north, general industrial to the east, with rural agricultural and general industrial to the south, with general business and residential performance to the west.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes ma'am.
What is allowed on GB and GI? What's the differences between what's allowed on a GI and a GB?
So, in fact, I'm gonna move forward in some slides here, I've actually got it listed.
Right.
Right here, the general business land use categories, we have eighty-three by right uses, construction of buildings, artisan manufacturing, motor vehicle, parts and parts dealers, along with nine store retailers, real estate rental leasing, which is, uh-
Motor vehicle and parts dealers.
Right.
And is the applicant's proposed usage consistent with that GB designation?
We can't consider that, this is a general rezoning, this isn't conditional.
Thank you.
If it was conditional, yes, so we can't, right, yes, sorry, I didn't put it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And here in the general industrial land use category, they have eighty-seven by right uses for commercial use, other electrical power generation, specialty trade contractors, food manufacturers, machining manufacturers, et cetera, more heavy industrial types uses. The applicant who is present tonight has given us this exhibit to kind of show what it is that they're, they want to rezone the property for. As we see on the left side of the property, this green, this would be the general business district they're proposing, while to the right, this purplish blue is the GI General Industrial District. And as you can see here to the far right of this property, there is shown some wetlands, the intent is to not impact those wetlands. Current road capacities, the volume to capacity is well below, the WMPO has give us these capacities, and this section of one seventeen has the ability to take on an increase in The Pender two point O comprehensive land use plan shows this as regional mixed use. The staff, in the staff report, we have supported a recommend, recommendation for approval, that the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the future land use map and for policies within the Pender two point O comprehensive plan, and also, the planning board gave us a unanimous recommendation for approval. Chris, any questions for staff?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes sir.
The homes south of this, the little white houses and several others, what's gonna happen to their tax value if someone else could, from the county may answer that?
That would not be a-
I understand that, if someone here from the county, because we have, we have homes now that have been looped into a commercial zone and they can't afford to pay their taxes.
Well, like, again, I can't speak to that, but the properties with the residential uses that are currently on it are not going to be rezoned into a commercial district. Only this area shown here is rezoned, or zoned, or shaded yellow, excuse me, is the only subject property to be rezoned.
I understand, but from Carr to Lucas, we have several homes.
Correct.
Several, um, single family homes.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm concerned about their tax rate.
Understood.
If someone from the county could answer that.
Mr. Commissioner, I don't know that there's anybody here from the county that could answer that, uh, even if we had our tax assessor, I, I don't know that he'd say because it's, as was said by the planning staff, I mean, their zone doesn't change, I, I understand what you're saying, if you're, if I'm living next to, yeah, yeah, I get, I mean, we all understand the reality that it would not immediately change, it could be looked at during revow, but there would not be an immediate change, um, but, and that is, would be, it would be speculative on anybody from the county to try to answer that, I think.
Did we have any opposition to this from nearby landowners?
Well, right now, I'm, I'm asking for comments and questions for staff.
Okay.
No, hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And now, uh, would the applicant like to speak?
Uh, we have several representatives from the applicant, um, you just come up. State your name, please, go ahead.
John McClendon.
Speak up a little bit.
John McClendon.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Some of us are hard to hear.
Yes, sir, do you have a-
Oh, yes, um, you know, the way that we had looked at this originally, sorry, the way that we looked at this originally was-
Speaking to the mic, that might help.
Yep, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, the way that, that we've been looking at this is, we've got a large wetlands buffer, you know, between us and the interstate, um, and I know we can't really contemplate our site plan and what it entails, but there are no plans from us to redevelop the frontage at this time, we have a commercial use for the rear of the property, so there, you know, hypothetically, there's not really a deal out there to do on the frontage that we know about yet, and we're not purchasing the frontage, um, we're rezoning it on behalf of, of the current owners, um, as part of our, you know, what we negotiated with them during our purchase and sale agreement to buy the rear of the property, um, but we've got, you know, a deal that we're very confident in the rear of the property that should create approximately fifty jobs, um, for the area, um, the pay rates on those vary pretty drastically, but some of them are, are higher end, you know, more mechanical positions that can exceed the six-figure mark, um, it's a project that, you know, as a company, speaking on behalf of Realty Link, we're very excited about, um, and we hope that we'll be able to garner your support here tonight.
Any questions?
And if I may, for the, for the new commissioners, again, when Commissioner Newton was asking about what the, the plan was, if this, there are two kinds of zoning, there's a general zoning, which means you get to do all eighty-seven things that they listed, for instance, and I have no doubt Realty Link is a partner in our commerce part, a different branch, but, you know, I have no doubt they're here in good faith, I want to be clear about that, but somebody could make them an offer tomorrow that they can't refuse, and so, and have a totally different plan, and so if it's a general zoning, you have to look at any of the uses that could be there, and you can't consider what their actual plan is. If it was conditional, they could come in with a plan, you'd know exactly what was going in, that's, and obviously, there's, with the frontage development, they don't know what's gonna happen there, I think, and so, they, they weren't in a position to do that. But I just want you to be aware, again, I have absolutely no doubt that they mean to do what they're planning to do, but you can't take that into, into your account, you've got to look at all of them, so, uh, I just wanted to, to, to get that there, because that's a, again, it's a quirk of North Carolina law, that, what we've, we gotta do, so.
Anything further from this gentleman? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do we have any signups?
Yes ma'am, uh, Bert Kringle?
Barry.
Oh, sorry. Okay, uh, Tom Greer?
Good evening, Mr. Greer, step up to the microphone, give us your name and, and where you live.
Uh, yes, I'm Tom Greer, four four five Lucas Avenue in Rocky Point. This zoning changed, and we're the first little white houses on Lucas Avenue right adjacent to the property.
You're right on the border.
Right, right on the border, uh. I would just like to ask the commissioners, I realize that, uh, there's only so much, this is just zoning, I understand that, and I take Mr. Thurman's advice well, and I appreciate him putting up with me and all my bumbling, um, our main concern, of course, is sound, security, and water runoff, uh, the group doing all this, Mr. Crawl, and I kind of forgot some of the others, they, they've been very forthcoming in discussing what their plans are, but as Mr. Thurman said, uh, that could change tomorrow, so I'm just here to ask the commissioners to please, uh, guard, you know, forty-two year residents, uh, that knew this day was coming but was hoping to avoid it, uh, and I appreciate you asking about the taxes, uh, because these are all things that will affect us, during the last eval, not, I don't know if the last one or one before, when they actually changed it, our rating, we had to actually object to the county because the county turned us down for septic permits and everything, and most of our frontage sits on one seventeen and bordering that, none of it would perk, so, in my mind, in usage, the land's basically worthless, it works out all right for us because we have pasture grass for our horses, but as far as being able to do anything without being able to get septic tank permits, land basically has no value except for the space and being road frontage, so, I'm just asking that the commissioners- So, I'm just asking that the commissioners oversee and protect both interests, so.
That's very fair, and we appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Uh, those are all the signups, Madam Chair. Uh, well, Mr. Crawl is also, but he's good enough.
Do we have any comment, any discussion? If I were in a position to make a motion on this, which I'm not, in this particular instance, I would consider the unanimous recommendation of our planning board and the recommendation of staff. And with the, uh, neighbor indicating that the applicants had been particularly forthcoming, I, I don't see or hear any objection that the proposed change is being particularly objectionable or objected to. So, but I don't have that ability to make that motion, but that's just my...
I think it's your district, natural district.
Yeah.
What's your point?
It is.
My only concern is that they're doing what they say they're going to do, but like you said, it could change, so.
So, any, any other comments?
Okay.
So, do, would you care to make a motion typically, historically, if this is in your district, so you get to make the motion to either approve or, or disapprove the, the request?
Would you have a reason?
We have four more commissioners on the board.
Sorry, only five others. That the, and, and typically, the motion to approve is that the zoning map amendment and, and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the, with the two point oh comprehensive land use plan. Can we get that page? Yes. So, that's the language for the motion to either approve or the motion to deny the rezoning amendment. Commissioner, would you like to make a motion in your district? To either approve or deny?
It doesn't, it doesn't fall on my district.
It's, Rocky Point isn't your district?
I understand.
Uh, it is just a custom that any, any, any requests that come, that the commissioner, who is from that district, makes the motion, but if you would like to.
I make a motion that we table. I cannot, I cannot make a motion to move forward at, at this time without more information for my adjacent landowners.
Do I hear a second on tabling this motion? All right, and having that fair, um, I, I, with, with our planning board having been unanimously supportive of it, um, you know, and our recommendation of staff, if it were my district, I would, I would make a motion to approve.
Okay. Can somebody else make a motion? I mean, there people to pass it on?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Opposed? If there is, um, the motion is approved. Thank you. Now, we are coming to item, thank you, everyone, for coming. Item twenty-two point two, rezoning map amendment of two tracks in the Long Creek Township from general business to residential performance. Mr. Bradley?
Uh, Ms. Newton, that was the item that was...
Oh, oh, that's right.
Removed, Ms. Chairman? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, now we come to the item...
Twenty seventeen.
Yes. Uh, twenty-two three, regarding the amendment to the UDO.
Yes, ma'am. Bear with me just a moment. Okay. All right. So, yeah, Pender County Planning and Community Development is requesting approval of a zoning text amendment to the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance. Specifically, the request is to amend...
Mr. Bradley, can you speak into the microphone and speak up a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. Specifically, the request is to amend section five point two point three, the table of permitted uses to remove other electric power generation as a use allowed via special use permit in the RA, Rural Agricultural, RP, Residential Performance, and PD Plan Development zoning districts. Additionally, the request includes modifying this section to require other electric power generation to be approved with a special use permit in the IT, Industrial Transitional, and GI, General Industrial zoning districts. So, just to give you guys a little background, the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance utilizes the NAICS code, which is a federal system of organizing land uses in, in those land use ordinances. Other electric power generation is defined as follows. This US industry comprises establishments primarily engaged in operating electric power generation facilities, except hydroelectric, fossil fuel, and nuclear. These facilities convert other forms of energy, such as solar, wind, or tidal power, into electrical energy. The electric energy produced in these establishments is provided to electric power transmission systems or to electric power distribution systems, such as producing energy to sell to our local power companies. So, this is the, the UDO text to be amended. As you can see above, other electric power generation is allowed with a special use permit in the RA, RP, and PD zoning districts, and is allowed by right in the IT and GI zoning districts. Staff is proposing to remove special use permit approval from the RA, RP, and PD districts and modify IT and GI to require a special use permit approval by the Board of Commissioners. So, just to give you guys a background on these specific zoning or, zoning districts that we're talking about, the RA, Rural Agricultural District is just what it sounds like, rural agricultural. The majority of Pender County is zoned that way. It supports very limited commercial uses, residential, as well as agricultural uses. So, this district, the RA district, is intended to accommodate non-residential agricultural uses and very low-density residential development, typically a minimum of one dwelling unit per acre, as well as not limited non-residential uses in rural areas adjacent to agricultural operations. Development in this district should rely predominantly on individual wells and septic tank systems for domestic water supply and sewage disposal. So, planning staff finds that the RA, Rural Agricultural Zoning District does not support other electric power generation, as the district is intended to allow limited non-residential uses, and that this use category is a utility category, which is often a large-scale utility that may impact the rural character of this district. And then we have the RP Residential Performance District.
So, what we're doing here is, we are not limiting the ability for homeowners in an RA district to use solar panels on their homes as they need to or want to.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We're not impacting individual use of solar panels for their homes or, or businesses. We are simply addressing the larger-scale utility-sized projects in rural areas.
Do we have a definition for utility-sized?
We don't, but anything under, so, we don't...
Is it by definition anywhere else under any type of...
Yeah, so, with the, with the two thousand seven NAICS code that we use, section twenty, you can see the first two numbers, it's two-two, one-one, one-nine. Anything with a two-two in the front is a utility. It's under the utilities category.
Yes, sir.
So, any times, anytime we're talking about other electric power generation, it is in the terms of a utility.
Yes, sir.
Which is often, to get their money's worth, they intend to build larger, you know, more feasible sites.
Absolutely.
Um, we're not talking about small-scale...
So, they just have a variant on solar farms? I mean, development of new solar farms?
This, this...
Give us some regulation.
So, this, and that's another, that's another reason behind this. So, this addresses three types of, of energy producers: solar, wind, and tidal energy. This isn't the part of the world that utilizes tidal energy. It's just not common technology. Wind, however, could be coming to this part of the world. I know they've been talking about some projects offshore, Brunswick County in particular, to use some of that wind power. So, the thing with the, the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance is that it lacks specific standards for solar farms or wind power. So, if a, if a group wanted to pursue one of these types of projects, we would just have to meet our typical requirements, which would be buffers and setbacks. So, and I'll get into the reasoning behind that a little bit more, as far as what we, we really are intending here with this, with this amendment. If I may move on.
Continue, please.
Okay. So, yeah, like I said, these are the proposed changes, simply changing the approval requirements for these types of uses. And so, the RP Residential Performance District is allowed to, it's intended to allow a variety of residential uses and densities with limit, again, limited commercial activities and agritourism. Staff finds also that the RP Residential Performance District is inconsistent with the u, with this use, and is not intended to have the scale of a project in that area, as it may impact the, the rural residential character of those areas. And then the PD Plan Development District, which is typically a mixed-use district, the PD District encourages progressive land planning and design concepts, and is intended to provide an alternative to conventional development. Essentially, the PD District often requires a mixture of uses. The intention behind that is to give flexibility to developers and builders, so that they can have more unique product types. Staff finds that this particular use would be inappropriate for any mixed-use project, because, again, these uses would take up a significant amount of land, and a utility being incorporated into a plan development could be a missed opportunity for the county in terms of residences and in terms of jobs. And these are some of the intentions behind the district. Again, the overall intention for plan development is to allow creative design, flexibility, a walkable community, a community where someone could work, shop, and live, all within one project. And so, we move on to the industrial district. So, IT, Industrial Transitional District is intended to provide heavy commercial activities, larger-scale marketing or wholesaling, production and assembly, recent, larger-scale retail sales. The intention with this district is to be a transition between those higher commercial areas and the heavier industrial. Staff finds that we are, we are strongly recommending that this district no longer allow solar farmers by right, and that they undergo a stricter approval process with a special use permit, so that the neighboring property owners are able to participate in that conversation and have their voices heard. Because the, the downside with a by-right project is that they're allowed to do it, and the community doesn't really have a voice at that point. So, the intention here is to make sure that if they're proposing a solar project in, in industrial districts, that it would have, require a public hearing in front of the Board of Commissioners, and the public would given, be given an opportunity to, to participate in a meaningful way. So, GI, General Industrial, again, it's intended to provide, you know, manufacturing, processing, repairing, renovating, painting, cleaning, assembly of goods, et cetera. Again, for those same reasons, we recommend that we modify the ordinance to require a special use permit again, so that the public has a, a opportunity to participate in that process. And so, another thing, this is a summary of all of the jurisdictions that border Pender County. We just looked at counties here, because you don't find these, these types of projects as often within a municipality or a smaller jurisdiction. So, essentially, Bladen, Brunswick, Columbus, Duplin, New Hanover, Onslow, and Sampson, all of our neighbors typically have specific standards for solar. And at this point in time, we are talking solely about solar. It's the most common form of this type of use within the region, probably within the state. So, just to go through these briefly, because this is another important point that we're, we're making here. Bladen County requires a special use permit in RA, Commercial and Industrial Districts, but they require specific standards for the solar use, which means full screening and a decommissioning plan requirement. So, which is a big, it's a really big, important thing for, for those types of projects, because there, there's concerns with the long-term life of a solar project. My understanding is that the panels can be good for twenty or so years, but the question is, what happens to those panels at that time? This requirement would address what would be done to the site once it's met its lifetime, as far as operating those individual panels, and what would be required to, to mitigate the site, bring it back to its previous condition.
And who is responsible for that activity?
Correct, correct. It established, it lays all of that out and is required by that ordinance. So, moving on to, but the benefit there is that the special standards are associated with that special use permit. So, in Brunswick County, in the, in the RR District, which is very similar to our RA District, it's allowed via special use permit. Brunswick County requires a maintenance and security plan, as well as a decommissioning plan requirement. Columbus County allows, with a special use permit, they require stricter criteria for setbacks and buffering, as well as maintenance, a maintenance requirement for the ongoing maintenance of that site, which would include, you know, landscaping, mowing the grass, that sort of thing. So, Duplin County requires planning board approval. I'm not exactly sure what type of approval that is. It may be administrative approval, but they require stricter screening, setbacks, and buffering, and also have a very strict requirement that if the site is, is in violation of the ordinance and those requirements, there would be a fine of five hundred dollars per day. That's the only one I saw with a stricter penalty for violation. So, New Hanover County, they allow it on a very limited level in industrial districts, but they did not have any special standards. So, Onslow, it is permitted in the RA District, and some of their industrial districts, low and high industrial, they require notice to airports and military installations, and have stricter setbacks and a decommissioning plan requirement as well. Sampson County allows with a special use permit in the RA, Rural Agricultural District, and as well as their industrial districts, they do have special standards, setbacks, and height restrictions apply, which includes wind energy. So, they actually address those restrictions related to wind energy, and they require a decommissioning plan with bonding for the decommissioning plan. So, not only do they require a plan for decommissioning, they require that the expenses related to that plan would be bonded, so that way, if a, an owner or an entity were to go bankrupt or dissolve, that money would still be in place to, to address the clean-up of that property.
Or an entity not be available...
Yes, ma'am.
...to perform the decommissioning. And have we addressed this here in this UDA revision, or would that be bonding be addressed in some capacity for Pender County?
Yeah, so, this, this text amendment does not include those specific items.
Will we address it in some other way?
Yes, ma'am. And so, one of the, one of the policies of the Future Land Use Plan that supports this, this proposal is that the Future Land Use Plan, and I don't have the specific language in front of me, recommended that the county adopts specific standards for solar farms. That just, you know, that was part of the, the plan that was adopted, I think around two thousand sixteen. Among many recommendations... Among many recommendations, it takes time to bring those to fruition. So the plan strongly supports adopting specific standards. So what this text amendment does, because I will note that staff will be working on those text amendments to come in front of the board very shortly. But in terms of this text amendment, so if we have the R A Rural Agricultural District, since there's no special use permit, their only option as far as pursuing a, a, um, site plan approval for solar would be to go through the conditional rezoning process. So at that point, the planning board and the Board of Commissioners have far greater flexibility with approving or denying those projects or requiring specific conditions.
And the public has a greater voice-
Exactly.
-in the process.
Exactly. So that would be a legislative hearing, um, just a lot more flexibility for the decision-makers with the county for the, for those types of projects. Where, where if someone brought forth a rezoning or a conditional rezoning in R A, the board could agree and say, "You have to bond this. You have to do a decommissioning plan that's bonded." And they would have no choice but to approve or, or walk away. Um, so again, this intention, the real intention here is to provide more flexibility to the commissioners and to the planning board.
As to how the natural resources and land use for Pender County for large-scale industrial solar farms.
So if there was a significant amount of, uh, public outcry for wetland impacts, something like that, the county could certainly act on that and make their decision based on that, and it would be totally fine.
But, but again, let, let me comment on something. This does not, uh, this is not saying that Pender County does not support solar farms.
No, ma'am. Not in any way, shape, or form.
It, it's just properly regulating.
Exactly. So solar is going to be a big thing moving forward. Duke Energy, and you, you know better than I do that, the state has mandated that Duke Energy and other power companies increase their proportions of solar production, you know, by a certain period. So-
To achieve their zero-carbon footprints by twenty thirty.
Exactly. And one thing that we learned recently that, it's not exactly intuitive, but this part of the state is very flat and very ideal for solar farms compared to the mountains where there's, you know, no level, level, uh, terrain. So ideally, the coastal communities, the Piedmont, or not the Piedmont, but the coastal plains of North Carolina will be ideal for solar production in the near future. So Pender County is a perfect place for that type of use. The intention here is not to, um, dismiss or to, um, you know, essentially, my point is that this gives the board more flexibility with their decisions and it will give the county a, a bit more time to establish clear, specific standards that would apply to all solar projects in the county.
And protect our citizens as to where we want to place these items if we choose to allow them.
Absolutely. Um, that's the real thing here because, you know, you, we may have a solar farm that's a thousand acres or more, or ten thousand acres, and s- certain people that have lived in a very rural part of the county for their lifetime, for generations, may not be ready for that type of change. So that's why we want to explore text amendments that support stronger buffers, you know, uh, requiring a vegetative buffer of non-disturbed vegetation around the perimeter, preservation of wetlands, setbacks from wetlands, that sort of thing. Yeah, this is that, that recommendation. So in the land use plan, it's recommended that the county consider establishing a guidance manual for the siting or installation of solar panels or farms that will address such things as incentives, prime farmland, soils, land clearing, stormwater management, and decommissioning. So that's something that staff is, is researching, um, and we will likely bring a text amendment to the planning board and to the Board of Commissioners in the near future for specific standards.
That sounds good here. I like that, what you're saying about preserving our farmland and, you know.
Absolutely. Because Pender County highly values its agricultural heritage here with the county. And while we may encourage solar farms, to some extent, we want to find a balance there, you know, to balance those existing agriculture uses and new energy, forms of energy. So as far as the comprehensive land use plan, both the rural agricultural and medium-density future land use categories are most commonly consistent with areas you find in the R A Rural Agricultural and R P Residential Performance zoning district and therefore would not be appropriate for the use of other electric power generation. Both the industrial and light industrial future land use categories are supportive. However, the proposed special use permit required would better ensure that nuisances associated with other electric power generation related to adjacent and surrounding properties are minimized. And then a few of the, a few of the, um, and I'm happy to read these aloud. Um, policy five point one E, compatible development. The county supports new commercial and multifamily developments that blend with surrounding neighborhoods and limit traffic, noise, and light impacts on existing residential uses. Uh, conditional zoning, the county shall continue to use conditional zoning process as a tool for encouraging desirable development outcomes. And then policy industrial uses and business development. The county supports the recruitment and siting of compatible industrial, heavy commercial, and large-scale employment establishments in areas that are consistent with the county's future land use map. Compatible heavy commercial and employment center uses are also appropriate within the regional mixed-use future land use category. And then we have agricultural business. The county supports efforts to preserve existing farming operations and expand agribusiness opportunities. Rural land use patterns, the county supports the rural residential and agricultural land use patterns as they currently exist throughout much of the county as depicted on the future land use map. And as I mentioned earlier, um, potentially solar projects in, when not balanced with specific standards or public input, um, a solar project may disrupt this rural land use pattern that we have in much of the county. And also rural non-residential uses, the county shall continue to accommodate limited non-residential uses in rural areas. Um, the argument that staff is making today is that a large utility-scale solar project is not a limited non-residential use. That's more intended for a, a small business, you know, re- restaurant, retail establishment, that sort of thing. Um, and planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this amendment at their last meeting. And then, um, you know, planning staff, again, respectfully recommends approval of the zoning text amendment as described in this presentation.
And then you come back with a redlined copy of the revisions?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Today, you're just asking us to, to approve philosophically the changes that you've gone over.
Yes, ma-
You don't actually have text.
We do not have any text.
Okay.
But the packet-
That's for clarification purposes.
Yes, ma'am. We're not addressing any specific standards.
Yes.
We're simply changing the approval mechanisms for this type of use in several of the common districts throughout the county. So in staff's packet, the packet that we provided, each of those neighboring counties, we included those sections of their ordinances. So we've already began to gather all of those, all of that information, and we'll be working on a draft to send to the planning board and to the commissioners.
Did you write that up about the farmland, protecting the farmland and all? Did you write that up?
That was from the future land use plan.
I was just pressed for it.
Yes, sir.
It's all written in there.
Mm-hmm. But it's good language to find to support what we're, what we're trying to do. It, this very much aligns with the land use plan in every way.
Uh, some places also have trouble with like wind farms, just wind farms and off the coast and place due into the wildlife, you know, a lot of different parts of it, but.
Yeah, off of, I, I worked for Brunswick County previously, and a big conversation there over the past several years was a, a wind farm off of the Frye and Pan Shoal, which is a higher, a shallower level of rock off, maybe thirty miles off the coast, which is ideal for wind energy. And the conversation went from, let's say, twenty-five miles offshore. Well, now the federal government's saying they can do eighteen miles offshore, fifteen miles offshore. And at some point, you know, it's, it begins to conflict with the character of the coastal communities.
And the discussion is to the depth of the, of the, uh, structure affecting the marine and aquatic life.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Brantley. Do, do, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brantley?
Thank you, sir.
So do we have a motion?
As Chairman, I would be glad to make a motion, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Brantley, for your hard work on this issue.
We're just getting started.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would like to express my appreciation to, uh, Justin and the, the staff. We're, as you know, we're without the director, and I'd also like to express thanks to the planning board that had a special meeting. And as you know, time gets tight here as we head towards the holidays, and we were able to get the planning board together for a special meeting so you could consider this tonight instead of having to wait until January. So I, I wanted to just publicly express my thanks to, to both.
And, and, and well deserved, and thank y'all, and, and, uh, our thanks to the planning board. We do appreciate it. All right. Uh, do we have anything else before we adjure? Oh, you want to go back into closed session? Okay.
No, our time's up. We're leaving.
All right.
Uh, and, and to try to get it started briefly, it can be the same motion that we went in before. I'm going to just say it's the same motion and it's already in the record.
Okay, so we will be, oh, okay. Same motion, closed session for same topics. Thank you, gentlemen.
Can we do that in here? Can we do that here?
Yes.